Just waiting one more minute. Jim is trying to call him right now. He has time, there's a lot of packs. That's a ball, maybe you should know that. I guess we could get started while we're waiting for Jim to call in. We can take our other customary stuff here first. So we'll get going here, Hartley. So welcome, everybody, to the Monday, November 2nd.
I think it just went dead again. When I'm not hitting anything.
If you guys could mute yourselves, please, that'd be great. So I'll call the meeting in order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Veronica Cal present.
Wayne Miller, present. Can I join me in the pleasure of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic which stands liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, I logged in as Steve.
They're asking if you're home.
No, you're just Steve.
People need to mute.
Yeah. Again, guys, if you're not ready to speak, please mute. Enough of meetings be recorded. Hartley's gonna be posting these now since TKM is hosting these. So thank you very much TKM for being set up and trained and everything's set there. Chairman's additions, deletions, I don't have any for tonight. So move right to the public comment period. Does anything have any, any topics?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
John Page Smith Street. About a week and a half or so ago, I was driving through the harbor and I noticed what appeared to be town vehicles and town personnel clearing some area at what I think is now 97 Main Street, the old Carpentry Place or the Carpet Place. I apparently, I guess, we, the town took that by a tax taking, but my understanding is that it's, is it a 21E or a super fund site that maybe still needs to be resolved? And if so, why are we expending funds to clean it up unless we're planning on selling it? But I think there's a liability that's associated with that. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. I refer that to the team.
Mr. Chairman, I am in now.
Okay, there you are, Jim. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I speak?
Yes, sir.
How I, I just, I guess I got some questions about that property. I hear there's a lot of concern. Well, I'd like to give you a firsthand knowledge of it. I used to rent that building before I'm in the building I'm at. And that building did have a serious gas leak prior to me ever being there. They leaked 2,000 gallons of gasoline in the ground. I have spent a lot of money myself doing testing with the state because I was gonna buy that property. I'm just very curious and very concerned that the town is jumping in. I'm understanding TKM may go in there. I mean.
I can, I can stop everybody on this one. We'll have an update for the next meeting since it wasn't on the agenda tonight, so.
Hi, Wayne, I thought it was.
It actually is.
Is it? Yeah.
The town administrator.
Oh, yeah. Yep, you're right. I'm sorry. It was lumped together. It's just up. So we'll have an update later in the meeting.
Okay.
Wayne, can I, can I make a comment?
Can you identify, please?
Jones Savoy Adams Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. So please, on Thursday of last week, the biggest hospital in Vermont and six other hospitals got hacked. And it reminded me of the fact that a lot of municipalities have been hacked of late. And since we don't have $300,000 to $500,000 in Bitcoin hanging around, I'm wondering what the town is doing to protect our systems, please? Maybe something to be addressed at a later time, but I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay, we can cover under COVID update, so.
Under COVID update? Okay.
It was COVID. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you then.
Our, the computer systems at the biggest hospital in Vermont and six other hospitals were hacked last week. And it made me remember how many small municipal towns like ours have their computer systems have also been hacked. And since we're not sitting on, you know, $500,000 of Bitcoin to pay ransom for our data, I'm just wondering what the town's doing to protect our, our systems.
Well, Jim, I'll, I'll take a stab at answering. That was the whole point of going with Guardian, our IT provider that we outsourced. They provide 24/7 monitoring of any attempts to hack, if you will. So Jim, I don't know if I got that 100% right, but.
Let me come someplace. Go, go way down.
I think we need a reminder that everybody needs to be muted if you're not participating.
One thing, too, to add on the water side, we, we're sep, we kind of separated ourselves IT-wise from the town. And we also have our own IT company that protects the water-specific servers and things like that.
Excellent. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, we'll move into meeting business. I'm sorry, was there somebody?
Yeah, that was me, Wayne.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
I, I guess my question on the hacking thing is, and maybe this is something we can, you know, talk about. I can talk with Guardian offline. I guess I would want to know, are there backups done on our system? If we are hacked, what do we have? Maybe this needs to be addressed a little bit more.
Yeah, we can, I, I would say next meeting, let's get an update with them because.
The meeting after that.
Because we've, we've had some time with him now and I'd like to bring the gentleman from Guardian in. He's obviously quite knowledgeable about the subject. So he can give us a report and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move to 2.1 appointments. We have an appointment for school liaison. Could I get a motion, please?
Actually, you don't need an appointment. I've, I've already been appointed.
So this is just an update?
This is just for.
Budget schedule. I'm sorry, I didn't read the whole thing. Excuse me.
No, no worries. No worries. I'm just, I can imagine. I'm just here to introduce myself. I'm Rob Templeton. I'm on the school committee. And this year I'll be the liaison to the Townsend Board of Selectmen. So just upcoming from a budget schedule and standpoint, we've started the budget process and, you know, looking out ahead into the coming months and at our meeting in December and January, December 21, or December 2020, January 2021, our school committee meetings will have reports from each of the individual schools. And we'll be looking at school level budgets at that point. Then we will be posting our budget online on January 18th. That'll be kind of the draft FY22 budget. We're looking to schedule a joint board meeting with you all and the members of Pepperell and Ashby sometime in that February 1st timeframe. And that'll be a public hearing as well to go over the, the budget overall. And we're currently targeting a March 15th budget adoption timeframe. Right now, you know, just from a COVID update, we are, the plan is to plan the budget for, for fall of 2021 with full participation at school. But again, that, that's kind of where. Did I freeze or did you all freeze?
You did for like a sentence there.
I froze.
Okay. Assuming you can all see me and hear me now. But anyway, just today, we're looking at planning for the fall of 2021 as a full in-person school year at this point. Obviously, what happens with COVID over time will play a big role in that. And how that, how that impacts the, the school budget still remains to be seen. Certainly more to come, but just wanted to, like I said, introduce myself to y'all and give you a quick update.
And I hope to God that happens. We're a little bit better by September.
Me too. Me too.
Thank you. And thanks for the quick update. We look forward to the, the next round of budgeting.
I'm getting every other word.
Okay. Well, I mean, for Ms. Cale, I could always send an email or she could always call me if she wanted an update. I'll plan on joining these meetings like every other month or so, just to give you an update. And if you ever have any specific questions, just, you know, feel free to reach out.
Okay. Thank you for showing up.
Can I ask a question? Rob, are, are you guys open for liaison from the Board of Selectmen to attend the meetings of the school committee?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, we're always looking for participation as, as y'all have time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And Will, the superintendent, I, I think he always sends Mr. Cradler the, you know, the schedule of the different, different meetings that we have. So certainly wherever, wherever y'all'd like to participate is great by us.
So Jim, you'll send those out to us then?
Yeah, they, they go to the town clerk, not to me, because they're required to be posted in each of the, the communities in the district. So I can ask Kathy when she receives them to forward them off.
Okay, so they go to the town clerk, then not to the town administrator?
They do. They go to the town clerk. I think I've been copied in the past, but they are sent to the clerks in each of the communities so they can be posted.
Yeah, and I apologize if I was, I, I thought you meant like the specific meetings that we have, like the joint meetings for, you know, where in the past we've had the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom from Townsend, Pepperell and Ashby attend our meetings. And I think those get coordinated with, you know, with Mr. Cradler. The normal school committee meetings are posted as, as, as always. And they're on the, the NM webpage under School Committee. You can get all those, all those meeting dates.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, guys. Move on to, move on to 3.1, a series of appointments here. So point David.
Well, before we do that, Wayne, should we open, should we have the Water Department open their joint meeting with us?
It couldn't hurt. So Todd, if you wanna, or Mike, you wanna call, give me the order.
Mike, is Nate, is Nate here?
I don't see him. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. You wanna open it?
Sure. Todd Melanson, Vice Chair of the Board of Water Commissioners, would like to open the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on November 2nd at 6:14 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mike McCackran, present.
Todd Melanson, present.
Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, Ronnie, can I get a, a motion, please?
I move that we appoint David Vijant. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. Vijant as the Water Superintendent for the Townsend Water Department, effective November 2nd, 2020, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and QRC check with a one-year probationary period.
And upon, for a successful contract negotiation.
Yes, I get it.
Do I need to read it again or are we good?
Just add that to the.
Add that, yeah.
All right. And upon successful contract negotiation.
And I'll second that. So any questions?
Do you have any questions? Dave's here. Do you have any questions?
If you just want to give a quick rundown on what you guys did, I know you had a search committee and screening committee and all that fun stuff, so.
So we put together a screening committee for the resumes. We got in probably about, I want to say 10 or 12 resumes. Some of them were quite easy to excuse, kind of exclude because they were from Fiji and some other really extraordinary places. The screening committee was myself, Jim, I can't remember his last name right now, and Lance LeWand. Jim's a former employee, now retired, and Lance obviously is a former water commissioner. We went through, we graded out the resumes, kind of trying to, to take all the, any sort of personal implications from the resumes. And we graded them out and we took the, we interviewed the top four. Out of those, Dave is the one that the committee chose. I kind of stepped back, just for the public record. I, I worked with Dave in Chelmsford. Felt, although I didn't have to, I felt I should recruit as much as I could from the process. And to be quite honest, Jim and Lance really thought he stood out among the other ones. We were looking for someone with the ability to plan both for staff, for the future of the staff, and the infrastructure. Pretty much you're going to be, for lack of a better term, rebuilding the Water Department to get it up to where a modern system should be. And in getting the, the planning of it and the, the fruition of that plan was what we were looking for. So if you guys have any questions for Dave, go right ahead. But that's the process. And he was introduced to our board last week and your board this week.
Do you have any questions, Ronnie? I've talked to Todd. There's leaked Water Department liaison. I've talked to these guys already, so.
You have, you have met with them? All right. No, I, I don't really have a lot of questions, I guess. The one question I would have is, what position does he hold in Chelmsford currently?
Currently, I, I hold the GIS designation for the Water Department, which I do the planning, all the mapping, the, the planning for the next 10 to 15 years. I hold a, right now I hold a D3 and a T3 license. I hold a survey license. And I hold a certification in wetlands biology, which I can delineate wetlands and replication.
Excellent. I know, well, I guess they, we did apply for an MVP action grant in the fall, which was pretty much heavily focused on the Water Department. We did not get the grant, but we do hope to, to reapply, I think. I can't speak for the planning board, but on the meeting that I was on last week, that's the thought. So I was wondering if you had any experience working with MVP grants?
Not those type grants, but I've done other grants for other organizations. I've been the president of Lowell U Soccer. I've been on the Board of Directors for Middlesex U Soccer. I'm currently on the Board of Directors for the East United States for refereeing. And I hold a payroll position for the East United States for, for payroll for the referees.
Okay. So experience outside of the job. Good.
I know where I know your name from. Like, that was heavily into youth soccer, so.
If, most people in the higher parts of youth soccer will know who I am.
I have plenty of my friends that are, so thank you. Any other questions, Ron?
No, that's, it's for me.
Okay, can I get a vote, please? All those in favor?
Well, I'd like to, I just. Yeah, no, it's okay. You can't see me. It's not working correctly, but I know this wage matrix is gonna play a factor because of the supervisory union. And, you know, I'm really a guy of, let's see what you can do. You know, if you're gonna jump in the driver's seat. So I just wanna, you know, put it out there that wage matrix was put there for a, for a reason. We did go out of the wage matrix last time.
Mike.
No, not the time or place, so just save that for executive, please. Thank you. Okay, Veronica, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thanks, guys. If you can just hang out for the rest of it and we'll go to executive later.
I apologize for that.
It's okay.
What time?
I wish I could tell you that.
How far back are we? Jim, how far deep into what we are? It's my son's birthday. I just want to go down and see him before he leaves.
We get a while yet.
Good enough. Thank you. I'm, I'm mute and shut the.
If you, if you're not back, Todd, I'll throw you a quick text.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so on to 3.2, appoint Renee Serene for Rec Department. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we appoint Renee Serene to the Recreation Department as a Senior Counselor, effective November 2nd, 2020, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and QRC check with a one-year probationary period.
And I'll second that. Any questions there?
Do we have to put in salary negotiations? Are we good?
You're good.
All right.
I don't have any questions, so then we're getting an update later. Anything for me, Veronica?
Uh, no.
Okay. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3, 3, point Bonnie Fitzpatrick is under the Rec Department. Can I get a motion there, please?
I move we appoint Bonnie Fitzpatrick as an Assistant Director to the Recreation Department, effective November 2nd, 2020, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and QRC check with a one-year probationary period.
And I'll second that, too. Any discussion here?
Not for me.
Neither, so all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3, 4, point Jeffrey Cormier is a full-time firefighter, paramedic. Can you get a motion there, please?
I move we appoint Jeff Cormier as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, effective November 2nd, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and QRC check with a one-year probationary period.
And I'll second that. Any questions here?
I, Chief Boynton did write up a paper. I don't know if you saw it, Wayne.
Yes, I'm looking at it right now.
About the process. I hadn't realized that there was a, like a, an appointee list maintained by the Fire Department. But from reading that, it appears that there is. I guess my one question, and I, I don't know, is Chief Boynton on this call? I can't tell. I guess my one question was, he said that he completed that, Jeff completed the paramedic certification. I know when we appointed him as on-call in July, that he, he was an EMTB at that point. So I am assuming that he completed that between July and now. Is that correct?
I don't have.
Yeah, I, I don't know that. He's been with us for longer than July, so you're looking at an annual.
I know that. I saw, he said 15 years. And so, but in the appointment that we did in July, he was listed as firefighter slash EMT basic. And so the appointment is firefighter, paramedic. And Chief Boynton had said that he had completed this, so I'm assuming that's recent?
I can find out right now. Actually, I'll send a quick message and I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm assuming he did. Otherwise, I don't think you could be a paramedic without having a license.
Oh, right, right, right. I was just wondering.
I, I don't have confirmation of that. I don't have it in my paperwork, but.
I don't know. I guess it would be, if, if he hadn't completed it, it would be contingent on it being completed.
Right. In the memo, it does say that he completed it. So I'll find out from the chief if he completed between July and now or if the list in July was not updated to show that he had previously.
Which is what it could be, so.
Anything else, Veronica?
No, I had requested that process because I, I was concerned that it was a quick appointment between, I'm assuming he's replacing the resignation, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so there isn't another opening on the full-time firefighter roster then? Is that correct?
I don't know that that's correct because I know that we did have a recent person that had stepped down. And I'm not recalling off the top of my head if we ever filled that one.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sorry, but this is, as he indicated in his memo, this is to fill the position vacated by Ben DeMera, having resigned.
Okay, all right.
All right, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thank you. All right, 3, 5, point Stephen Demato as Constable for the Town of Townsend. Can I get a motion there, please?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Veronica and I spoke about this and I reached out to Chief Sartell. If we could put this over until the next meeting, because there hasn't been a process apparently that's been clearly defined as to what role the police chief has in making recommendations on constables. So Jay wanted to have a little bit of time to put something together before you took this matter up. So if we could put this off to the next meeting, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, and we'll invite him to the next meeting, then discuss them.
Can I ask a question on that? Then just something that I'd like to add if we're gonna discuss it at the next meeting. What is the process for appointing a constable? And do we, what happened to the constable we have now?
You still have the same constables that you've had. You, you have a number of them and you can have a number more. I think that the first question you, you, Veronica is a good one, is what is the process? And do you want to put a limit in for the Town of Townsend? So I think that's what Jay is looking at, is putting an overarching process in place for you to consider that puts the, the candidates through the Police Department for vetting. Because these folks can, instead of just being the ones that put up the warrants for county media, they can also serve process.
Repeat that, Jim? I think I froze.
Yeah, I said that Chief Sartell is looking to put a process together that would have the Police Department having a role in vetting the candidates before they get to the Board of Selectmen for a vote. Just because they're a pretty, a pretty powerful position in the community.
And what was in our packet looked like Chief Sartell, we needed his signature and his recommendation on that. And that wasn't, it was blank, the place where he would have recommended or not.
Which again is, which is why it's, he's asked to be put off.
Great.
Not a big deal.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're passing over that?
Yeah. So Jim, just make sure that gets on the next meeting. Please invite Jay to the next one.
Yes, sir.
4.1, accept grant from Center for Tech and Civic Life in the amount of $5,000. Can I get a motion there?
I move that we accept a grant from the Center for Tech. I move that we accept a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of planning and operationalizing safe and secure election administration.
And I'll second that. You elaborate on this, Jim? Is this something Kathy?
Yes, Kathy actually submitted, um, this is a private nonprofit that sprang up over the last couple of years, and they've put a, a great, uh, a great effort into helping cities and towns handle elections. Um, this year, everybody knows it's, uh, a presidential tomorrow. Um, a lot of, a lot of work in advance. Expected to be a lot of work after the fact as well and counting the, um, the absentee or mail-in ballots. So recognizing that this is an expense that we're not used to, um, Kathy sought the, the grant and was successful in getting it.
Good.
Um, I have one thing. My, my concern on this, it, it's not a concern for the grant or the application. It's just that it was awarded to Townsend Town as opposed to the town of Townsend. Will that be corrected when they make payment? So it doesn't come to Townsend Town, or maybe that doesn't matter?
My, my expectation is that it wouldn't matter, that when, when we have either a wire submitted to the bank or if they delivered an actual hard check, that the bank is gonna recognize Town of Townsend or Townsend Town as one of this entity.
Okay, all right. And these funds need to be expended by December 30th, correct?
Um, I do not know, but I know that she will have no problem expending them given the, the workload that we have with the, the current election.
And there is a, um, a report due, no, later than January 31st, on how the funds were.
Correct.
Expended, okay.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Um, Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thank you, Kathy, for getting that.
And Mr. Chairman, before you move to the next, I did get a response back from Chief Boynton. He said that, um, Mr. Cormier did get his medic licensing within the last month. So he finished the program within the last month. So that makes sense then, that in July, he was still listed as, uh, EMTB.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, 4.2, review changes, updates to policy for night. I mean, that's before, uh, gift acceptance policy procedures.
Wayne, I'd like to move this to a later meeting, one where we have a work session for policies and procedures.
Yeah, let's just add that to that one.
Okay, I see that happening after the holidays, pretty much.
Yes.
I think we have enough work sessions, um, coming up, so.
That shouldn't be an issue, Jim, correct? We lose him?
All set, yep.
Okay, all right, so we'll move that to the future work session. 4.3, review, renew, review, approve road opening permit. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we review and approve a road opening permit as submitted by the Highway Superintendent regarding 105 Fitchburg Road.
And I'll second that. Any questions here?
This is again for gas service? Is that what we're doing?
Yep, it's a standard permit.
All right. No further.
Okay, all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.4, review of referral for a variance from ZBA 50 Highland Street. Yep, this is just a standard referral, Jim.
It is.
Do you have a comment on it, Wayne? Because I do.
I don't, just, go ahead.
Um, I, again, I'm looking at this more with the conservation and planning hat on, the forward left-hand hand. I, uh, I have a little bit of a concern for a variance that allows us to put a driveway closer than 15 feet with a cement wall, prior to the hydrant, um, when in fact you could move that driveway a little bit to the right. Yes, you'd have to take out trees. But those trees are, um, I, I just think that Ross Associates should look at it and reposition the driveway. Where, yes, they might need to take out a few trees, but I don't think those trees are within, um, anything that would not be permitted by the Conservation Commission. In other words, I think that if there is an alternative, especially when it's around public safety, which is what a hydrant is, I would prefer that the ZBA, um, look at alternatives than, um, then, uh, I would ask the ZBA to look at alternatives to a variance that could be put in place by the owner-together with their, um, uh, you know, their, uh, with David Ross Associates who's doing the work on this. That would be my comment.
Okay, so Jim, do we just pass those comments on to those only word and thank them for the referral?
In five years, this is the first time that there's been anything other than a thank you for the referral, so, um, if I pass something along, it would be coming from the Board of Selectmen. So would, would you want to have a vote to, for that as comments from the Board of Selectmen? I guess that's a question for you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that'd be appropriate. It can't hurt. Okay, so can I get a motion, Veronica?
Um, I move that, um, we, um, I'm not exactly sure how to word it, that we, uh, add a comment to the referral notice, um, that states that because this deals with public safety, a fire hydrant, that we respectfully request that the ZBA, um, uh, ask the applicant to, um, seriously consider other alternatives.
Okay, and I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Okay, 5.1, Town Administrator Updates and Reports. So Jim, you have a list.
I do. Been just a moment to get myself situated here. All right, so first thing on the list, um, oh, I'll go, I'll go. I could either go through the, the written report or the way they're laid out on the agenda, and I guess because the public has seen the agenda, I'll, I'll go in that order, so. The round two funding requests for COVID. So if you go to your report, you should see under Section 2 Financial Updates, subsection A, there's a copy of the town's CDRF Round Two Application and Close for Review and Discussion. So if you look through the backup that I supplied, you will find copies of the documentation that shows what went in as requests for Round Two. There is a page that reads CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund Municipal Program Round Two Application Form. And the final four columns are designated for Round Two. You'll see that an additional $40,000 went in as the requests for additional hardware, um, and infrastructure for telework capacity and, uh, internet security. I'm sorry. I thought I heard somebody say something.
Yeah, that was me, Jim. You heard me say something. I guess what I want to know is, do you want questions as you go? Or do you want to just do the whole thing and then come back? If I have a question on this.
Oh, I think while we're at it, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this is for teleworking? I, I was curious what hardware we were, um, looking at.
It's actually not, it's, it's not just teleworking. It is actually, that $40,000 request is the request that has been previously approved but not, um, officially as a part of this application for the, all of the infrastructure update work that has been done at the Library Senior Center, which was about $45,000. So that's where this money is, um, is being accounted for.
Okay, so if you go to, um, two pages further on, where it says, uh, Round Two CARES Act Coronavirus Municipal Program, Other Requests Round Two, Library Senior Center ID Infrastructure Upgrade Previously Approved, $46,000. So where's the other 6K? As I see Round One, so the 89399 from Round One, that 80, that 90,000, that went to things other than the library.
Correct. That did, um, the security work that we did in the Town Hall, um, highway, library connectivity between the Town Hall, not the actual infrastructure in the building, and the, um, cemetery parks.
Breaking up, sorry.
It, it was for other than library and senior center expenditures, the first round.
Okay, so, so where does the other 6,000, I didn't equate the Library Senior Center with this 40,000 because it was 46K. So where, where's the other 6K?
There was in that 89, there was roughly 6K that we had on hand from the first round that left us only 40 short to make the whole thing work.
Okay, all right, thank you. Only question on that one, keep going. Thank you.
And the next, and the writing is small, I apologize that I'm having a squint at it. Training, there's a $10,000 request for training. And the training that we'll be looking at would be some of the things that we've seen come through the MMA, which is learning to manage a municipality in this new era that we're living in. So how to, how to deal with a remote workplace. Um, some of it is, um, contemplated for training in, the, the kind of psychosocial aspect of being, um, an essential worker and being required to be out in the workplace, um, when others are not. So a number of different training opportunities being looked at that tie back to COVID. Questions on that one?
No.
Okay, the next is 10,000, and it is, my goodness, I need to get a.
First responders, grocery store employees, gas station attendants, and others who interact with the public.
Additional PPE, so that is actually, um, I'll check the second page here. Yes, that is expected to be used for air purifying equipment for the building as the winter months are upon us and we're less likely to have windows open, um, and doors open, breathing the same air. That'd be looking to have, if, air filtration, uh, in each of the spaces. Um, the Council on Aging and Senior Center have done this already, and I know that ME and the Rec Commission have, uh, used this in the past as well. So this would be looking to do that for spaces within the Town Hall.
Okay.
And next you see election expense. So this would be the.
Well, before you get to that one, what about the social distancing measures in public buildings? Is that what it is, or cleaning disinfection, uh, in public buildings, 15K?
Uh, that's the one that we just spoke about with the air.
That's air purification?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was PPE, including first response. Okay, never mind. There's two 10Ks. It's 40, two 10Ks, and then a 15K. So the 15K is the air purifying. The two 10Ks are for MMA training?
No, the first 10K is for the trainings. The second is PPE. There's, um, the foggers. We have two foggers coming on for the Town Hall. Right now, we've been borrowing one, um, from the Police Department. And that's looking to continue funding for, um, the part-time custodians. Um, we have some funds still on hand. We've taken our actual part-time regular custodian and increased his hours, and then we brought one person on as a, a part-time interim. Looking to carry that forward for additional cleaning.
Okay. Now election expenses.
Yep, election expenses, again, the town clerk puts in for, um, the additional expenses we've had to hold elections during COVID. If you come to the Town Hall tomorrow to vote, you'll see some of the signage, um, some of the additional, um, work that's gone into place to make it a safe environment for, uh, COVID additional staff, people on, um, on duty for the day. That's her request.
So that's in addition to the 5K grant?
That is correct.
Wow, okay.
Then you get to, the next in the Round Two column is $40,000 for short-term rental or mortgage support. And this is an item that we've spoken about at the last couple of Select Board meetings. That has been, um, discussed in more detail at Joint Housing Authority and Affordable Housing Trust, meetings, um, one, two weeks ago, and one, um, as Veronica informed me just again last week. There may be some discussion to be had about whether there will be a request to have that number increased. I expect that at the next meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust, that that discussion will come up, but as of the date that the application needed to be filled last week, the number that had been put forth was 40.
I have a question for two, two lines up prior to that. The meals, um, grocery and/or meals delivery modeled on COA activities. Did we need more money for that? Or is the Senior Center getting funds from other places for this?
They are getting funds from other places, and no additional ask was made on this.
Were they aware that there was a second round?
Almost definitely. It was discussed in detail in the Department End Meeting.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
So then we would go to two pages deeper into the other matters, whether or not within the general categories that are laid out. Previously approved had been the AV system for the Great Hall. All that had been previously approved, the funding had not been accounted for, so the second round needs to account for it. And that's to have sound, video, um, and additional Wi-Fi access points in the Great Hall to allow for, town meetings and, and regular meetings of regular boards and committees in a socially distant and appropriate, uh, way during COVID. We talked about the Library Senior Center IT upgrade. Next is, as you know, we've been discussing the website upgrades. So there's a request of 10.5, $10,500, um, seven of which is in for the town and 3,500 in for the Police Department. Then you have distribution dispensing site security equipment. The police chief put in for, um, lighting. There's a, a document that he put together that went in with the application that goes into great detail of, uh, the, the value and import of having, um, security lighting available, remote, uh, security lighting available for the purpose of having a dispensing site. And next you see police training interviewing equipment. And again, the, the chief had a, a detailed explanation attached to that. Fire Department Condensation Pumps, part of their HVAC system in the main central station, um, is, is going to be better served by having condensation pumps being upgraded. The way the chief, the fire chief explains that is, again, in terms of the, the circulation of air in a closed environment, particularly during COVID times, that this is an important thing to do. The police chief then puts in for ultrasonic cleaner for firearms. So instead of each firearm being. so instead of each firearm being wiped down, as you might wipe down your bag of Cheetos from the store with a alcohol wipe, this would be ultrasonic cleaning for the firearms. And then lastly, Remote Learning Enrichment Program tables, barriers. So this is the recreation program that's inside the, uh, Great Hall starting next week, which would be, um, the equivalent of, uh, card tables or, or even TV tray sized tables for each individual student in the remote learning program, and barriers in order to keep, um, the student population where they're supposed to be, uh, because it will be being held in the town hall. So of, of those. Spoken about things, there are two in particular that are very time sensitive. One is the rental and mortgage assistance, and the other was the website. So as I indicated in a conversation with Veronica earlier today, um, the application deadline was just last Thursday, um, I, uh, Friday, excuse me, I expect that they're still culling through everything that came in. So the plan is to give Heath, um, our contacts a couple of days or so, and then reach out to him and, um, have a conversation before, in advance of getting the, the actual written determination that things have been approved, and try to get the verbal approval on the, um, the mortgage and rental assistance and the website so we can, um, push those things further down the road quicker.
Can I ask a question?
Please, yes.
This is, I'm looking to see if Emmy is still on this call, and I don't see her. Is that twenty-five hundred enough to run the program? Like, are they gonna have computers in there for the kids?
Yep, that's, that's not the expected amount for the whole program. That is just for those specific things that were just cited.
Okay.
Barriers and the tables.
And where are we getting the funds for other things?
Recreation, w- with the exception of a portion of Emmy's salary, is self-funded.
Self-funded. Even though even, um, equipment such as laptops and things like that that they might need, they're gonna self-fund those, or the kids are bringing their own?
If Emmy were here, she could tell you, but I, I do know that there, there are no requests nor budgeted funds for the program. This is all self-funded.
Okay, all right.
All right, next we add set the date for the special election that you've called for in January. So in my written report, it's section four, miscellaneous updates A, and I'll be reading from, um, a memo from Kathy Spofford, the town clerk. She writes, after a review of the selectmen's meeting from Tuesday evening, October twentieth, I've gone over our election schedule and all of the required dates regarding the special election. I'm suggesting we hold the election on a Saturday, January twenty-third, from eight AM to five PM. This will have the lowest impact on the holiday season. It is still within the timeframe set by the Board of Selectmen. I've been in discussion with our building commissioner, Eric Chartran, and he's going to go over the square footage at the Townsend Meeting Hall to see if that would be a viable option for holding the election. The schools are not open, excuse me, are not an option in this day of COVID. They are trying to keep people who are not required to be in the building out to help prevent COVID from entering the building. And I believe that when we held elections at Hawthorne Brook, there were only two precincts that could fit, and we have three. In twenty sixteen, I was told I would not be allowed to hold any elections in the new high school. If election is moved to another location of the Memorial Hall, according to Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty-four, the selectmen in any town shall. Shall something printed descriptions? My printing is really, really light on this.
Of such polling place to be posted in such public places in such precinct as they determine, and shall give notice by mail to each residence of one or more registered voters herein.
Gotcha. So if we do in fact look to change the location, that type of a notice would need to go out, which is an additional, um, expense and additional work as well.
Do we have tax bills going out in the near future? But then go out in the tax bills because they are mailed to each of us?
I could check that, and I'm not certain if the law requires that it go as a separate mailing or not, or if it could be piggybacked. Um, obviously, it's a non-issue if we were to hold the election on a Saturday and hold it in the town hall as we are tomorrow, which is the next point she makes. If the Townsend Meeting Hall is determined not to be an option, that will bring us back to Memorial Hall. Having a Saturday election would have the least amount of impact on the recreation program being held in the Great Hall. She further goes to say, as for early voting, as mentioned at the selectmen's meeting, there is no law that covers this for a local election. Early voting is only for general elections, and according to the Acts of twenty-twenty, which ends December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Under board action requested, just set the official date, please. So, um, I don't know what the, the members of the board feel in terms of the location, uh, or about Kathy's recommended date of Saturday, the twenty-third.
I'm, I'm fine with both, so.
Well, I of course have questions. On the meeting hall, um, I was wondering if, if Eric had had a chance to figure out if that was a possibility for all three precincts?
He hadn't as of today, no.
So, all right, so that makes it, uh, you know, as far as picking place, that makes it a little difficult. Um, you know, if we don't know if that's a possibility or not.
If it were your wish that it be the meeting hall, then you could have a tiered motion and vote tonight that says, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, from eight to five, primary location being the meeting hall, if deemed accessible and appropriate by the building commissioner, if not, revert to Memorial Hall.
Yeah, I guess with the rec program in there, I would rather have it in the meeting hall, um, so that they, they don't have to move everything out of there. Granted, you have to move everything to the meeting hall, but you have to move it into the Great Hall anyway. So, um, and, uh, so I, I guess I have a slight preference for the meeting hall just to not disrupt what's going on in the Great Hall right now. Um, so.
We have time between now and then to evaluate all this, so we can, we can.
Well, the other thing, if we are providing notice in tax bills, and which I think is the way to go, if we can do that, I know that in the past, not necessarily for elections, but for other things, um, announcements have gone out in the tax bills, recycling, uh, conservation announcements, things like that have gone out with tax bills in the past.
Yeah, the one, the one wrinkle there, Veronica, is that not every registered voter is a taxpayer. Um, so you could have registered voters that are living in a rental, and they would then not get that notice. Um.
That's true, as, you know.
I, I guess if we could make a tiered motion there, and then Jim, can you work with Kathy on the best way to announce where the final election would be and what the date that needs to be?
Absolutely. Yep, she just needs the vote on the date from you, and if you do the tiered on the, on the location, she can determine that between now and your next meeting and hit the ground.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'm not ready for a motion yet. Uh, one other question is, um, the funding for, if in fact we have to pay for a mailing, um, can we add that to elections in COVID funding, or for the funding from the grant that we got?
Yes, it, it would, it would come from either or her regular elections budget. But if we have to do it, then we do have those three, um, three budget opportunities, the existing grant, the pending COVID application, or her day-to-day operating budget.
Okay, all right. So, um, I guess my motion would be that we, um, hold the election on Saturday, January twenty-third, um, at the meeting hall, if it is, um, you know, possible to hold all precinct, three precincts there, um, otherwise, uh, at the Great Hall.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica, hell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Next off the agenda is website update, and that would appear in your written report, section three, C, website updates. The procurement is complete for a vendor to upgrade our town website, Civic Plus, in the amount of six thousand dollars. Contract award is pending approval of the round two funding requests under the COVID relief round two that we just spoke about. Um, so again, one of the things I said a moment ago is, I'll make a call to try to get advance on whether or not the, um, the state representative can tell us that the rent and mortgage is approved and the website is approved, because we have to have the funds expended by the end of December, um, and both of these take, uh, quite a bit of work.
Right. Um, so I wanted, yeah, so I wanted, um, to set the dates to meet with Civic Plus, but I can do that myself without, um, Wayne's approval, correct? Because I was named the web person.
The way, right, the way I'd recommend we do that, Veronica, is, is wait until the award. Um, so sequentially, in the next couple of days, I'll call the state. I believe I'll get the verbal that the funds are in place. I can then notify Civics Plus that they have a notice to proceed, and they should be expecting a call from you, tell you, and then we're off and running.
Okay, so we requested seven thousand in the COVID funding? The extra thousand is?
The extra thousand was Lori just hedging on the fact that some other thing could come up. Um, so I put in for six, and she bumped it to seven in case there was something else that came up.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, next recreation program in the Great Hall, and that appears, again, in section three, uh, sub B, Remote Learning Program. The state approvals have been issued for the previously discussed and detailed Recreation Commission Remote Learning Program. The program is set to begin on November blank. I have, uh, a text message that I received after I put this report together, so bear with me. Uh, twelfth, so it'll be November twelfth, twenty-twenty, and will be held in the Great Hall. Under board action requested, there is none. That was just for your information. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
I have a question. How many students will there be at a time, or children at a time, and how many children in total?
In total, twenty, and at any time, if they're all in attendance, twenty.
So it's, so all of them are there five days a week? It's the same students every day of the week?
My understanding is they are full week slots, and they are limited to twenty in total, correct? I don't know that they've been filled yet. That doesn't mean that they might not have. I just, that's not something that I've been involved in.
Okay, I didn't know if it was, okay, if you were in school on Monday and Tuesday, you know, doing the, uh, you know, Plan A, you know, would you want this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? So what you're telling me is it's full weeks or nothing. You're there all day, every day. So this is students who are remote only?
That's my understanding. If, um, if I'm incorrect in that, I'll make certain to get an update to you tomorrow when I talk to Emmy. But my understanding is they were trying to keep it as the same kids. Obviously, you have less, um.
Right.
Possibility of, 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 you know, contaminating one another if, uh, you're, you're the same kids and not fifty cycling through twenty spots.
Okay, all right. So that was my question.
Mine is, does the governor's announcement today have any effect on moving forward with this?
It doesn't appear to. When you look at the one section, I do have, um, I got those in late this afternoon, so I, I did print them and wanted to address them with you. The one area that it looks like that might have fallen, it doesn't expressly state it. So, um, unless they're told by Desi that they can't do it, they're going to continue to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so should we, should we announce what was stated this afternoon?
I do have it, and I was, I was gonna put it at the end of my report, so, uh, just it just came this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. And next we get TCAM Zoom procedures. Um, this is the first meeting being hosted by TCAM. So instead of, um, it being Jim Kreidler's waiting room you sit in, um, you should now see that it's TCAM, um, Townsend Community Access. The, um, the meeting should also be showing right now live on our cable channel. So not only can you have the option of looking at it and participating via Zoom, but watching it on your television. And we expect that'll be the, the case going forward, as long as we're doing remote meetings. I can tell you that, um, they are working to set up their email addresses through the new domain name that they just caught. But for the time being, there is an email address that, um, that Mr. Resett, the chairperson of the Board of Directors, is using, um, for boards and commissions that need to request a meeting to be scheduled and hosted by TCAM. Um, it's his private email address. I, I would probably not say it over the air right now, but boards and commissions do have it. Um, if they need it, then it should be within a couple of days or so that, um, that's no longer necessary, and that there is a, a TCAM, um, domain name and email address that'd be associated with that request.
Okay, good.
So my, my question was, do we need a policy on this? Is this something that we should add to our policies and procedures talks? And I'm assuming that this means boards and committees will not be doing phone-in meetings anymore. They will all be Zoom, um, handled by TCAM?
I don't know that that's a, a safe assumption. Um, I know that one of the boards that's currently not doing Zoom and is still utilizing telephone is the elected Board of Health. And if they, as the elected Board of Health, choose to continue to use the telephone, that's their prerogative to do so. Um, but this will be made available to them if they so choose.
And unless we set a policy that all boards should use TCAM for?
That, that goes to the same type of a point that I made at the meeting two weeks ago, which is that you are the select board, you are elected, and for some things, you are superior to other boards. You are the legal entity that is the town. There, you can prosecute litigation. So there are things that you can do that others can't, but you don't have the authority to, by decree, tell another elected board how they're going to conduct themselves. So.
Okay, I just think that phone conferences are really, really difficult. Um, and, and, that's all. And we have TCAM now. We, the town, have, you know, put our faith in them to handle our meetings, and I think it would be great if all elected boards did that, so.
And I think that's a wonderful way of saying it, and, and that probably carries a lot more weight than something coming down by fiat from the select board.
I, I think that there should be a policy, though, that all the boards get. I'm, I'm sure that Jerry and Hartley will write it up, if they haven't already, so that all the boards know how to use them.
Certainly.
Okay.
Excellent. Um, next we have properties, South Row Road. Um, the only update I can offer you at this point is that there is no update from the last update I gave you, because the last update I gave you was that the Conservation Commission had not yet, and as of this evening, they have still not yet met. So once they do, we'll have that update for you. Ninety-seven Main Street. Um, I, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about what's going on with ninety-seven Main. Um, what I think brought this to everybody's attention is the fact that, um, the town's personnel appeared at ninety-seven Main a week and a half or so ago, um, had the brush around the building cleared. Um, some of the vines were actually growing through the windows and through some of the masonry, um, had the building rekeyed, because in March, it officially became property of through foreclosure process of the Town of Townsend. Um, what I think adds a little bit more clarity to this is the fact that in two thousand and one, so coming on twenty years ago, the town actually officially took the building for back taxes. There's a registered document in the Registered Deeds under the signature of Kathy Rossback, the then-town treasurer collector, in January of two thousand and three, where we officially took it. So the taking began in oh-one, was finalized in oh-three. So since oh-three, the Town of Townsend has owned that property.
Was DEP aware of that? Because if you go online and you submit this address, you will find that they were serving, um, the owner with fines, et cetera. All the work that was done with test wells was done through the owner at the time. Um, and there are documents up through twenty fifteen where they were serving notice to that owner as opposed to the town. So I, um.
This, it's, it's, it's getting skitsy on the camera, but this is the, the file that's in the town, um, for that property, and it does have all of that information you referenced, Veronica. And it does have all of that information you referenced, Veronica. I can't tell you that DEP was ever notified that the town was the owner through tax-taking. All I can say is that it became known to me in March of this year that the land court foreclosure process was finalized. And we had COVID hit, so now when things were clearing a little bit to the end of the summer, went down and actually laid eyes on the property and made certain that it's secure.
I, I think it's the word tax-taking. I, I, you know, I'd have to get Lori or Vicky or somebody to explain that to me. But I know that in the past, I've seen properties that were listed on the Middlesex South Registry as tax-taking by the, by the town, when in fact, the owner was still the owner of record. And even as of a week and a half ago, in the assessors database, the owner of that property was not the town, it was the previous owner. So the word tax-taking, when it's at the registry perhaps, is not exactly that the town has taken ownership of it. I've, I've run into this before and it's been explained to me before. But I, I don't know, I would need some more explanation of what that means. But I don't think that if the town were the owner, that DEP would have spent time serving the other, the owner of record. I don't think so. But that said, I guess I'm curious as to what the town has done to weigh the amount of money? What do we know what we're going to need to pay to or get by grant or by loan? What is the tax? What taxes will the town have to pay? Or what, what will it do to our tax rate? Where do we get the money? We were worried about an election in January. So where do we get the money to clean up a waste site? I guess for me, having the town own this property is both the good news and the bad news. The good news is finally, it will perhaps be cleaned, cleaned up so that there isn't, you know, stuff going into the river, because it is right across the street from the river. I guess the bad news is that we, the town, by, you know, taking this property, taking ownership of this property, we are now the responsible party. So I guess what I was looking for is some sort of, what obligation is there to the townspeople with respect to paying for remediation of this site? Do we have numbers on that at all? Do we know if it even, do we know the status of it right now? Did we know the status when we decided to go forward with actually becoming the owner of the property?
Ask compound questions and then you speak for a while and then more compound questions. So I'll be trying to remember where it all went. But most simply stated, Veronica, is this is a parcel of land that had a contamination problem and may well still have a contamination problem that has not been addressed by anyone since at least '09, according to the files.
I think 2015, if you look at the.
No, there's paperwork from 2015, but I'm talking actual work in the earth since, I believe, '09.
It was either '09 or '10, yes, that's true.
So, so for 10 or more years, it's just laying dormant. I, I don't judge that's the responsible thing for the community.
No, that's the good news, we own it.
Right. And, and the other, the other part of that good news is, I'm like a private owner. We have available to us different pockets of money that we can apply for and receive. So stepping back for a little bit, back in the eighties, the tanks from that old filling station were removed and wells were installed. And the, the wells around the building and under, and to the properties across the street, additional wells were installed. And there was a plume of, of contamination tied back to petrochemicals that was clearly migrating from the site across the street to those properties. Over the course of time, some of those numbers in subsequent readings were less than they had been originally. We don't know now, as I said, since 2009, over the last 11 years, what those numbers look like. The way it would generally work is they don't go up, they generally dissipate and go down. But we don't know that. So how do we find out what's going on? Under the regulations in Massachusetts, it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 21 E. Everybody's heard colloquially the, you know, it's 21 E issue. You do a Phase One report, which is basically a paper report. It's not even about actually visiting the site, it's looking at the parcel of land on paper and the records. What is it? What has it ever been? What likely uses occurred? And what is expected based on those uses? That was done back in the late eighties. And then subsequent to that is a Phase Two. A Phase Two study actually gets into the dirt, gets into the site, is more of a physical examination, and comes up with actual test results from the installed wells at that point and says, this is what the property looks like right now, and this is what a remediation plan to bring it to a level of acceptable reuse would cost. There are documents in the file that show at one point that was roughly $200,000. Now, that's, that's a number that, again, is probably, the better part is 15 years old. So I don't know that that's a good number today or a bad number. The other thing to recognize is even though a Phase One and a Phase Two haven't been done on the site, they are no longer of any value in terms of, in terms of the process because they are stale, they have timed out. So I've been working with MRPC, the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. John Hume is the director of their brownfields program. The brownfields program, when there's a site that has contamination issues, it's called a brownfield. It's not green, it's brown. And they have the EPA, they're, they're an EPA grant recipient. We would be then, through them, a sub-recipient to have the Phase One and Phase Two conducted again, to determine, unlike what we see on paper from the eighties and early nineties or most current, 2009, we would see what the lay of the land is today. There is then a round of EPA funding for grant funds for municipalities for remediation. So those are the steps that we would need to take. The fact that the town is the owner puts some responsible party that actually intends to take responsible action in the driver's seat to clean it to the extent that it needs to be cleaned and put it back into active reuse. Now, in my report, I speak about what does active reuse mean? It could mean any number of things, all of which would go through a town meeting vote if it's going to be put out for bid for a private party to bid on. So if there's somebody that has an interest in running a business at that location, they could put a bid in. It could be put out for nonprofit use, which is, again, not an inconsistent thing in the municipality. If a town has a property to put it out for bid with higher-rated points going for an application that is a nonprofit purpose, that might be where some of the conversation around TCAM was coming from, because TCAM is looking for a home. Lastly, it could be that it's retained as a municipal use for something like the Facilities Department or TIMA. TIMA, as you probably know, is also homeless. They, they have spaces in many places, but they don't have a home. So the, the end game is to get it back to active and productive reuse in a clean fashion.
I agree. I guess I would have, as a resident of Townsend, I would have appreciated, knowing that the 21 E and the amount of liability from a dollar standpoint that we were looking at would have been done prior to us going to tax court so that we could have, or to land court, so that we could have known that ahead of time for planning purposes. I think it's, in my book, it's ways, wiser to anticipate than to take something and then say, okay, now we have to clean it up. And we do have to clean it up now. And we, it would be wonderful if we get a grant to do it. I'll just say that. Secondly, the building is in ill repair. So A, before we put it out to anybody, we are going to need to clean it up. B, the building is in ill repair. And so I guess I would want to know what it will cost to, I mean, if I were gonna consider buying that, I would want to know, first of all, that the site has been cleaned up, that that is completely good as far as DEP goes. And secondly, I would want to know, you know, whether it's even worth repairing? Or is it a tear-down? I mean, what, if, if it's so bad that there are branches growing through the windows and doors, that's not a good thing. Or through the roof. There, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make it usable. So where it's nice to say we're going to, you know, you know, auction it off or whatever, A, it needs to be cleaned first, and B, is, is anybody going to be able to afford to repair?
A couple of responses to, a couple of responses to your points, Veronica. When you speak as a citizen and say that you had, you, you would have preferred to have known in advance what the expense was going to be, because then you can be more planful about it. Where I see a disconnect in that is that there is not a plan to use taxpayer-operating budget monies to do this work. And I, I guess I would.
That would be wonderful.
I would, I would, but that's the plan. Now, I would posit you, would you, would you not have taken this action? Would you have?
I don't, I would want to know what I was getting into before I took that action. That's what I would want to know.
But the, the alternative, Veronica, from a leadership perspective, is that you have a parcel of land that you know is contaminated, that you know that the town has some liability for. Now, we can.
That is the good news, that we have that. From a leadership perspective, the good news of this parcel is that we now own it and we will know that the ground gets cleaned up. From, you know, if you look at it as a person who pays taxes in town, if we don't get a grant, and we are gonna need to clean that up, we're looking at loans. And we've been, it, it's just good to plan, is what I'm saying, also from a leadership perspective.
So with that, Jim, I think, so is it okay to start the process with the MRPC to see that, that the steps?
Yep, we've already begun it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be on a call probably the tail end of this week with their consultant using their funds. They have, as I said, they have EPA technical assistance funds that are currently available that they've committed to use with us to be able to update the file. We'll need a, a new Phase One and a Phase Two. So those are, those are grant funds, not loan funds, nothing required to be paid by the local taxpayer. So that needs to be done irrespective of anything else. Because right now, we've allowed 20 years to go by where we have staked a claim in that property, knowing that it was contaminated. Yes, Veronica, we have. We have, I just saw you shake your head, no, we have.
Well, then why is the?
I can't tell you that. I can't tell you why things didn't happen. I can only tell you the things that did happen. What did happen is that, that the, the document exists that a, a taking was done in 2003 by the town.
That is an assessor's term, I believe. I, I, again, that would be something that I would want to talk to.
She's the treasurer, she's the treasurer collector. It's got nothing to do with the assessors.
Well, I know that I've looked at properties in town that have been listed as a tax-taking. And when I've gone to Vicky to say, wait, this property is owned by the town now? No, 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 it's not. And so I, I think it's a terminology thing. I'm pretty sure the town has not bought property since 2001. But I don't know enough to talk about that. But I, you know, we own it now, so there you go. I mean, we actually own it now. So good news and bad news. So anyway, that's all I have to say on it. I would have liked to have known, as a selectman, I would have liked to have known back in July when I first started all this, that that was owned by the town. I would, I just would have liked to have known that.
Toward that point, Veronica, I have spoken to the treasurer collector about making certain that instead of it just being an internal distribution, when a parcel is taken officially and foreclosed upon, then it'd be a distribution to elected boards and committees as well. So she's worked then into her, her system now moving forward.
Thank you.
Let's see what the process comes up with, Jim, and we'll determine the next steps, Veronica, as we get more information.
I, I think Mr. Shank had something he want, he might have wanted to add. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if he still does.
Mr. Chair, can, can I at least speak in regards to that property where I have?
Yeah, real briefly, because I'd like to move on to other community business.
You know, I, I just want the town just to be very careful what we do at our tax dollars. As Jim says, what I've heard Jim say, that's fine. I've also, for the past 15 years, been dealing with DEP and different people out of Worcester. And that's a bigger problem than we all think. The properties across the street, the wells are in front and the back, and them properties were contaminated. And I know for a fact that those people are just waiting for somebody to take responsibility because they're gonna make them clean their property up. There's also still North Middlesex, which no longer is, North Middlesex has a loan on that that they never foreclosed because they didn't want to take responsibility. So whatever we do, please, poor the selectmen, just protect us as a community. You know, I never bought, bought the property because I didn't want to have a half a million dollars' worth of money to clean it up. And one thing that the state said five years ago, and I can get the name and number of the gentleman if you guys would like, it has come down to numbers, but whoever takes that property is gonna have to put the mediation above ground tanks for years to come and pay to do that. So just make sure we protect us, that's all I ask, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
And Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Malanson had a question about whether town meeting needed to take a vote to take property.
No? No, that wasn't my question. I figured that would get answered later. My thing is I have concerns about any, any breaking of ground there, disturbing sometimes with these VOC plumes or VOC contamination, they sequester themselves until they, until you start to dig or, or move soil. Harbor Trace is directly downstream off the Squanah Cook. Before any work gets done, I'd like the Water Department to have all the documentation on what's going to be done. I'd like, definitely want DEP involved, both drinking water and Bureau of Wayside Cleanup. Until we get a write-off on that, I don't think the Water Department can, can in good conscience allow any work to go on there until we know that we can protect the well downstream.
And toward that point, just so there's no misunderstanding, nothing would be being done on that property except being done through DEP's 21 E process. So the consultant and MRPC has on, it's beta engineering that they're working with.
Are they a licensed, are they a licensed LSP?
They are an LSP. They were picked through a bid process through MRPC. So they, they are the licensed LSP for the, the, excuse me, the EPA grant that the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission got. Everything will be coordinated through them. We don't, we don't have the experience or the interest in doing anything.
No, no, I, I get that. I just, like I said, I, I'm not sure that, I just wanted to make the town aware that there is a major well that we rely, that we're relying heavily on that is downstream on, off the Squanah Cook, that if you did disturb something there, that plume would, would most definitely go in the direction of the Squanah Cook. And with the pumping volumes and stuff, you have a good potential of pulling VOCs into that. So I just want to make sure what is done there is done so that it, it's also protecting that, that resource. That's all.
And the files, the files that exist, Todd, show that DEP had Harbor Trace in mind when all the steps that were being taken. when all the steps that were being taken from the late eighties through oh nine were being taken.
I've seen, I've seen the swap report, so I, I know that too. I just, it, it, I, I've just seen towns go ahead with one plan and the water department and, or, or other entities trying to catch up. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, but, so we don't end up with a bigger problem.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. Great, next.
And next we have, uh, I'll skip that for a second. Audit committee, um, I did put a, a copy of the posting from last year that we put up for the audit committee. And if it pleased the board, um, just give me the nod and we'll put that back up again. We do have a, a requirement that we have an audit committee now for the last two years. I don't believe we've ever officially filled it. So we can get the notice back up again and, and do a solicitation for folks to, to join the audit committee.
Go ahead and do that, please.
The only thing I want to add is the, um, the, the posting reads a little bit differently than what I see on the policy. Someone needs to.
I'll see you.
Sounds like someone's on the phone. All right, a newly formed audit committee that will operate under the general direction of Board of Selectmen. And its purpose is to review financial statements and management letters. It's also to solicit interview and recommend to the Board of Selectmen the firm of independent auditors. That is to audit and report on the financial statements issued by the town. So that's a little bit different than reviewing financial statements and management letters.
You can add that provision as well in the posting before it goes up.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and other than that, I'd say post, because I think it's supposed to be appointed by December.
December, the end of December, yep.
Okay.
And the one you skipped Jim is schedule work sessions. Veronica, I, I apologize, I owe you dates on that. I don't have my phone with me, so I'm not gonna be able to give you an answer tonight. But I'll send you, I'll send you some dates and times tomorrow.
That works, thanks.
Thank you, sorry.
Excellent, so I'll get that posted tomorrow. And the work sessions we just talked about for a moment there, so those will, I'll see dates once you, you guys have confirmed some things, myself available. We next have license agreement. I received an email from council today with a draft license agreement. License agreement is a, a legal document that allows a private entity to have access to someone else's land, in this case, town land. And a license agreement is the mechanism that has been used in the past when donations have been made for either the creation of real property or the improvement of real property, um, done by a private party that has an interest in gifting such, um, work to the town. So a year ago, an offer was made to, um, by a, a private concern to donate an addition on the council on aging. And within the month after that offer, the board voted to accept the gift and wrote back in kind to the offer. And, uh, we're in a situation now where the, the company that is making the offer of the gift, the actual construction, um, management, um, has submitted documentation to the building commissioner, has been advised that there is certain, um, permitting requirements that are going to need to be met in order for the project to move forward. So we internally, as, as the select board, the town administrator, council, um, building commissioner, have been having conversations about, um, whether it makes sense to issue the license agreement for a project before we know for certain that the project is in fact moving forward. Now, I have no information that says it's not moving forward. What I do have is communications between the building commissioner and the, um, the project proponent. As recently as today, the building commissioner has reached out to an engineering firm that had been referenced by the project proponent as perhaps being the firm that would be responsible to, uh, address some of the building commissioner's concerns. Found out that, that firm has not been contracted as of yet, but that there is a, a dialogue between the project proponent and that engineering firm. So that seems like a strong indicator that there is an interest in moving forward. Having said that, it'd be then appropriate to have a license agreement in place that would allow the project proponent to have an actual, um, legal standing in the real property to apply for permits. Because the one thing in a project like this that is being gifted to the town, where the town is not supposed to be involved in the design creation or programming of the space, it would be important for us not to be the applicant on any of the local permitting or even state permitting that might be required. The project proponent could not be the applicant without the license agreement giving rights to, um, act on that property. So if the Board of Selectmen is, is comfortable with the information that we have to date regarding the project going forward, then the license agreement would be in order. And we have that available this evening. It's been drafted by council. What was being asked to be filled in, um, by council was the, the map block and parcel and the building name, and that has been filled in. The one thing that has also been asked to be filled in, um, is an amount of time, if any, that the board wanted to limit the license agreement to. You know, to, to timeout or to sunset on or before some month in some year off into the future. So having said that, I will look to the board for, for guidance.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to review it first. I haven't seen it today. So I haven't had a chance to review it. I don't know if you have Veronica or not, but.
No, I, I haven't seen it. It wasn't in our packets, so it must.
It came in late this afternoon.
Okay, so I, I think that'd be something we can bring up in our next meeting after we review.
I, I will say that I think it's important to, for the license, uh, agreement to be, um, completed, only because to get a permit, you have to have the applicants. The applicant must have the owner's permission to be on the property, or you cannot get the permits. So if we don't give the license agreement, I think it's, um, and we're not involved in the permitting process, which we should not be, um, it would make it very difficult for permits to be had. So I think the license agreement needs to be signed. So, and I haven't thought about period.
Yeah, so let's, let's review and, and take it up in our next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
In the, in the alternative, uh, Mr. Chairman, you, if you felt that time was of the essence in some fashion, and I'm not suggesting that it is, but you could vote this evening to execute the license agreement out of session, presuming it meets both of your approval. And it just gets left on the, left on the, on the counter. And if Veronica, you read it and you think it's good, you come in and sign it. Wayne, you read it, you think it's good, you come in and sign it. If between now and the next meeting, there's only one signature or no signatures, we'll know that it needs to be taken up again.
Well, if that's the case, don't we have to agree, agree tonight on the, um, timeframe?
I'd like some time to, I'd like some time to think about it. I'm not ready to set that.
I would agree with Wayne. I would like to review it. As much as I would like that license agreement in place so that the permitting can go forward, I would like to, um, review it. I haven't seen.
I think two weeks is not a.
I agree.
Huge ask, so.
Gotcha, I will email it directly.
Okay.
Okay, and just let me scan the actual report quickly. Department head meeting, um, I enclosed a copy of the agenda from the department head meeting held last Tuesday. For your information, Veronica and I had a, a communication about, um, her interest in seeing these agendas. So going forward at the selectmen's meeting, most proximate to the department head meeting having been held, I'll make certain to enclose a copy of the agenda of the things that we went over.
I will say on the agenda, I was, I was glad to see the onboarding and the greeting packet, um, being discussed. So thank you for that. And, um, I guess again, this is for, to put forward for policies and procedures. Do we need something like that as a policy or procedure? Or is it good to be informal like this? That would be my one thing to talk about once it's been brought forward, so.
Are you, are you talking about the specific items needing to be a policy? Or am I giving you a copy of the department head?
Oh, no, the department head agenda I definitely want. I'm talking about the onboarding commissions, committees, boards, and the welcome to town and greeting packet. So.
And the, the last thing that's on my report, it's the very last thing, is cash operations. Anna did come see me tonight. She still has three outstanding departments that have not yet formalized themselves. One did come in just tonight after hours, so she still has two more. So she will be, um, at your next meeting, having her report for you on that.
Well, I, I actually, I'd like to have a work session, a separate work session with that. There's no rush on this. It's something to look at and explore and think about. So I think it would be more appropriate to have a separate works, work session, not a meeting where we're appointing people and blah, blah, blah. You know, a work session where we can sit and talk about it.
Okay, we'll still, we'll still get her report obviously within the next week. Just so you have whatever, what the status is on the ground today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks Jim. Five two, Board of Selectmen announcement updates reports. I do not have any.
The only thing I have, I guess, uh, two things. I would want, let's go with, um, the, the Charlie Baker announcement about masks that came out today. We were gonna say something about that, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, you're right. I, I just updated our website to include the new additional guidelines from the Baker, administration for our COVID flyer or, or header on our webpage.
Certainly, and very briefly, there, there are three specific orders that came out today that update or amend, uh, existing orders. One is face coverings, so the requirement for wearing face coverings has been increased. In, in some places, even, uh, more of a, a, a broad requirement than existed at the height of COVID earlier on in the process. The other that's been addressed is, um, certain business hours needing to be closed by nine thirty PM for in-house, um, interaction with the public, the, the buying public. They can still, if it's a restaurant, they can still serve, um, past those closing hours. Remote or delivery or the, the other, you know, contactless ways. So we'll have that one up there as well. And the last is the one that, um, Mr. Chairman, you were speaking about gatherings in the Commonwealth. This one goes a little further than anything we've seen to date as well. No more than 10 people in your home. You know, God bless those that have eight kids and, uh, two parents, they can't let anybody in. No more than a hundred for, um, other, um, outdoor facilities. There are carve-outs for political expression and religious activities. So it does, it does ratchet things back to what we were seeing back in, in April and May in terms of gathering. So I'll get a link to these posted on the website, so people can go through and read them. And the last COVID-related piece of businesses that the Board of Health at their meeting last week, uh, recommended that the select board close all town offices tomorrow because we will have quite a, a traffic flow of people coming through. And the clerk's office has done a, a lot of work in trying to keep one-way traffic. So having people coming in and going into offices, back out and walking back across the halls in the oncoming face of a line of people waiting to vote, uh, was judged by the Board of Health to not be, um, in the public's, um, best interest. So, um, I did have an opportunity to speak with the chair about it and he concurs that that was a good idea, but I've not yet made an official statement to the employees because I would need to have had this discussion in a public meeting and have you be able to weigh in Veronica as well. So, um, there's an expectation that the building will be closed to, um, that the offices will be closed tomorrow and people will be working remotely to the extent that they have the capability. But it's not official unless and until you have so voted as a board. So I would look to your, your thoughts on that.
Well, I guess I, do you want a motion Wayne?
Yeah, yeah, let's just make it official.
So I, I move that we close town offices, um, tomorrow. Well, I, I shouldn't say tomorrow, that all, the only people in town hall are those involved with the election, whether they're working or voting, um, that everybody else should be working remotely if they are capable of doing that.
And I'll second that, so all those in favor.
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. There you go Jim.
The other thing that I had was, uh, um, I attended the, um, energy committee meeting last week and they will be bringing back their, um, their, uh, energy master plan development subcommittee ideas. There, I, I brought to them what we had discussed at our last meeting. And in the process of doing this, I had one other thing, but I would rather they came back. I want to see what they come back with. It was something that we hadn't discussed that came to my mind while I was in the meeting and I didn't bring it up. But I expect that the energy committee will be resubmitting, um, their plan to us. And at that point, we'll review it. So take a look at the up, you know, at the makeup of the subcommittee when that comes in and we can talk further at another meeting, whenever they're ready to submit that.
Mr. Chairman, there is one other very brief thing. I, I know you particularly, since when you got on, had, has an interest getting the cable plant extended down to, Bayberry and, and Sauna Road and, um, Ben Pond Road. There was one pool that needed to be replaced. After all, the dust settled, it has been replaced. And now Verizon should be this week making the adjustment on their cabling, which then finally allows Comcast to begin stringing theirs. They have the engineering ticket in hand, they have the crew, the, the design work done and the crew ready to go. So, um, the expectation was that their work was going to be less than a week to accomplish. So all things considered, we could be within a couple of weeks away from having, um, drops being able to be made at homes.
That's fantastic. Good to hear.
Long time coming.
Yep. All right, five three, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants. Can I get a motion please?
Um, I move that we review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Second, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Okay, so we'll be going into an executive session, so we have a motion on, or we need to, can I get a motion of going to executive? Please Veronica.
Will we be returning to?
No.
Okay, um, I move that pursuant to GL, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, we enter an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, where an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town and the chair of the board so declares.
And I do.
Regarding the supervisors' union.
And I'll second that.
And I should say, and we will not be returning to open session.
Correct, yes, and I'll second that amendment. Uh, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. So Jim, I'm not sure what we have to do here with Hartley to make this happen.
The water department members will also need to vote to convene in executive session. They are posted for it, but they would still need to have a, a motion made, seconded and voted by roll call.
Okay, Todd and Mike, can you take care of that?
Nate, you there?
Yes.
Do you want to make the motion as a chair?
Uh, I'd like to amend the roll call to show Nathan Madala present and, um, and you want a motion to, you want to adjourn our meeting?
No, we wanted.
I'm sorry.
We go to executive session.
Oh, yes.
And not, and not return.
Right, um.
Would you like me to read, would you like me to read that, Mr. Chairman?
Let me get my boilerplate up here. I have it right here. Okay, pursuant, uh, I move that, uh, the Board of Water Commissioners move into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, um, to discuss, uh, strategy with respects to collective bargaining, where an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position, litigating position of the town and chair of the boards. or litigation position, litigating position of the town, and Chair of the Board so declares we will not be reconvening into open session.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at all, those in favor?
Todd Malanson, aye.
Mike McCracken, aye.
Nathan Madala, aye, that's passes three in the affirmative.
Okay, so everybody that is not either a Water Commissioner, a Board of. Hartley would be able to. Just take a few moments and see.
Okay, give me a couple minutes, I gotta take a break.